And I forgot the mic. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a fun one. We have a new board member and I would like him to come around to the front for a ceremonial swearing in, which we've all had to go through.
How's that?
How's that? Okay, if you stand there, I'll stand here. So, if you could raise your right hand, please, sir, and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of Member of the Board of Education.
Of Member of the Board of Education.
Of Celine Area Schools.
Of Celine Area Schools.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Fantastic. Thanks very much. Welcome to the board. Dr. Kowalski and I have a couple of very brief statements to read. Thank you, Ben. I just wanted to say a few things. I would like just to take a moment to acknowledge the support of the school community through our partnerships with local agencies as well as our ISD to provide grief and trauma support over the past week, the past challenging week. It will soon be available to our students. Trained mental health professionals will be on site to offer support in processing trauma and grief. Celine Area Schools also partnered with CARE Solus to support our community's mental health needs. CARE Solus will be used to anonymously find community therapists or treatment programs matched to your needs regardless of circumstances. The support is complimentary and confidential and provided to students, staff, and their families by Celine Area Schools. I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Kowalski.
Thank you. Those supports, and we want to thank our partners once again, were provided as we experienced the most unthinkable things, the loss of two beloved staff members. Dr. Amina Allen, Principal of Celine Alternative High School and Liberty School, was a passionate leader, energetic. She brought energy, vision, and deep care to her role, her students, and her staff. In her time here, she made a lasting impact. Also Ms. Shannon Sonnen, a first grade teacher at Pleasant Ridge, was a gifted educator whose dedication to her students spanned decades. She had many, many students throughout her time here. She was a steady presence, had a quiet strength, and someone who celebrated others with genuine joy. These passings left a hole in our hearts. We know that grief touches many of us in different ways, so again, we appreciate the supports we've been given by partners, and I hope we can honor Dr. Allen and Ms. Sonnen by caring for their kindness and what they did for students here in Celine Area Schools for years to come.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Kowalski. Public comment. Is there, are there any lined up? For the second? Thank you. Seeing as there's no public comment, we'll move through the agenda. I have no response to previous public comment. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So?
Who is that?
Tim.
That's Tim Austin. Thank you. Burwick? She beat you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Opposed? No, thank you very much. Seven zero. We have a one scheduled report. You didn't know it would be that fast, right? Look at us, zipping along. We have one scheduled report. I'd like to welcome to the podium Laura Washington, the Principal at Woodland Meadows, Kim Jasper, the Principal at Celine Middle School, and Teresa Stager, the Principal at Celine High School. Not necessarily in that order, apparently. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. We are here to present on the annual handbook review. So if we could turn the slide, here are the topics we're going to be talking about. Why make a change, which we did make changes to our handbook this year, and the process, what has changed within it, and what is next? As you know, Troon Law is one of our partners in education and in our board policies, and they have a handbook which gave us an opportunity to add sections that we may not have had before or to streamline sections that we already had. It also was a great way for us to be able to connect board policy, to connect law that maybe we hadn't updated in a little while. We were able to condense the handbook to make it a little bit more user-friendly, and then also in the idea of being a school district and not a district of schools, all having a similar handbook so that young fives through 12th grade, parents would easily be able to find the information that they're looking for because the format is the same in every building.
All right. So it was quite a process that we went through, and I want to start by just saying that Laura Washington, who's being very humble, really kept us all on track. The school year is very busy, and this spans two school years, and she kept us moving and focused. So she led us in reviewing the Troon handbook and determining whether or not this is something that we'd like to adopt to lay the foundation for our next handbook. Collaboratively, we discussed this and we agreed, and so it was purchased in the 23-24 school year. In the 24-25 school year, Laura implemented a timeline for all of us and kept us on task. We had four checkpoints throughout the year that were strategic in making sure specific parts of the handbook were revised and ready to go, and we collaborated at the end of the year in May to make sure that we were all on the same page. The checkbooks and the conversation that we had in May really allowed us to have really fruitful conversations and discussions around nuances between elementary and secondary, to identify the things that could be the same and should have the same language in the handbook while also allowing for developmental differences throughout the years. Jackie Martin was also part of the conversation in May, and so adhering to the structure and the spirit and the legality of the handbook was really important, and she was very supportive and helpful in that as well. And then in June of 2025, just a couple months ago, it was officially published, so all of the school handbooks are now out, and we now have the Troon version of the handbook at all schools. I also forgot to say, and I think it's important to note, that in the process of adopting and discussing the handbooks, multiple departments were involved. So food service, transportation, health, all of the departments that have something in the handbook that relates to our students had a voice and had say in what needed to be in there. So highly collaborative, smooth process.
So what has changed in the handbooks? The formatting is now a handbook where all books have the same five sections. There are district-wide policies and procedures, academics, student clubs, activities, and athletics, discipline and the code of conduct, and building specific rules and procedures. As I mentioned earlier, there are also links to board policy when possible. The language and topics are all consistent for each handbook, and that is helpful for all of us and for all of the adults in our building to know that there's a, of what is in each other's handbooks, and hopefully for the students too, as they're getting older and moving from building to building. The expectations have always been the same. They were not just written, just weren't written the same. They're being very kind. They work really hard on this handbook as well. I just implemented timelines, but they really had to do a lot of the work behind it, so thank you, but it really was a very, very collaborative effort. So what's next? We continue to do a yearly review. This is something that we've done, obviously, throughout the years, as long as I have been here as an administrator, so this is something that we still hold true. This year was, again, just a little bit different because we did undergo such a big transformation of the handbook, so that will continue to happen. Policy updates, you all are very great. When there is a policy update, Betty lets us know. We go back, we take a look at the handbook. One of the things that we do say about the handbook is it is a living document, and we have it right on the front, like things can change, so if there is policy that changes, we can add that in there, and then we let our families know that there have been changes in the handbook. We're going to continue the discussion of Troon Board Policy as a handbook, so while this was a Troon handbook, right, they gave us some verbiage, et cetera, because we're not a Troon policy holder, they don't put their stamp on it. If we were to ever go that way, they would put their stamp on a handbook as well, and so that is something that we continue to discuss as well, and then we continue to align policies and procedures and the handbooks themselves. So it's a really important reason why we continue to get together yearly and make these alignments to the handbook, so thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the board?
I guess I was just gonna say, it's kind of mentioned there, the Troon policy. You know, that's kind of been one of the things with the handbooks in the past is making sure handbook verbiage is consistent with policy verbiage, and going forward, I do think we are looking at the Troon policy, but nothing's been done yet. That would make it easier going forward, right?
It would make it more consistent.
More consistent, yeah.
I think you were kind of asking a question of me as well. We are, we are, I am in the process of doing some crosswalks between where we are with Neola and what the Troon policies look like. So to go from nine volumes to five volumes is substantial, and we've been asking some difficult questions, like if we were to go with Troon, would we lose any of our special policies that we spent years crafting? And the answer, the first answer is no. So, but we'll, we'll go from there.
Teresa, I can't quote you exactly, but what you said about being a school community but not a community of schools. Oh. I love that. That's really excellent. Very good job. So inevitably, questions come up both from our students and from our families with regards to the handbook, especially for new families entering a different building, right, because it's a slightly different handbook that's aligned more in an age-appropriate fashion, probably specifically for the high school and maybe the middle school. So can we just, for our community, kind of go through, like what's that typical escalation path when you have a question about something in your building handbook, reaching out to the principal, et cetera? Can you just speak to that? Because sometimes the questions initially come to the board, and, yeah, can you just kind of? Exactly, yes.
Yeah, so if there's a question about the handbook specifically, or really any sort of expectation or policy at the school, reach out to the principal. We're here to help. We're here to answer questions. We're here to partner with the parents and our community, so that would definitely be step one. And then if that's not settled, there's other ways you can go, but start with us, and we're happy to talk, talk to you about whatever it might be.
When you say the, the books are ready, they're ready to roll out to the students in electronic or actual physical form? And are they available yet on the website?
They are. They're on the websites, and they're, they're not printed. Even at the high school, in the planners that we give out, there's a QR code because it is a living document, as Laura alluded to earlier, but they are online, and we do try to have them done each year in time for them to go out with the student return forms because a part of that form is acknowledging and agreeing to the student handbook.
Well, great. Hearing no more questions, let's say thank you very much and ask you to come back next year, would you, to talk about this? Thanks so much. I'd like to entertain, we have one action item. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Liberty Club van purchased from Gene Butman Ford in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and four dollars, as submitted by Brian Puffer, Director of Community Ed.
I'll make that motion, and I, and I do want to note that some of that funding is coming from the CARES grant.
Okay, thank you. Because you serve on that committee. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Support, Tizidis.
Tizidis, JG. Quick side note, did I pronounce that correctly? I don't think I've ever actually read the name aloud. Gene, is it Butman? Butman?
Butman.
Butman? Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I'll keep that locked away. Is there any discussion?
Since Darcy brought it up, do you know what the percentage of funding that came from CARES?
I don't know the percentage. I want to, they were do, I apologize. Is it fifteen or twenty? It was somewhere, it was not an insignificant amount of money. I don't think that they could have done it without the, the funding.
That's good. It's also indicative of how we're being good stewards with the money that we do have, so, thank you. We can check then. I seem to think it's fifteen thousand, though.
Just, just since Darcy brought it up, I thought that was important to, since it was not an insignificant amount.
Absolutely. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All in favor, please. Thank you. We'd like a quick update from the Board Finance Committee and then the Board Policy Committee, and finally, we have one more discussion item on evaluations and setting a schedule, so I'll ask our, our board members to get their calendars ready too. Right, thank you. Tim.
So the Finance Committee meeting went, met today at four o'clock, and just kind of talked about a few different things we had. It was kind of new. It was my first as the treasurer and our new superintendent, as well as our new board member. So we did a quick overview of the budget process and how, how we get to where we are, so Nate could get a little bit of an idea on that. And one thing that I will share on that, because one of the things we were talking about is funding and how that comes about, and there was an interesting article in the Sun Times, and thank you, Jennifer, for sharing it with us, that talked about a data center coming into Celine Township, and in that article, it talks about eight million dollars to the schools, and so, you know, you're instantly, you go, oh, wow, eight million dollars to Celine schools. Well, it doesn't really work that way, and so that eight million dollars goes to the state, or maybe it comes directly to us, but the state regulates what we get, so if we don't collect it, we just get eight million dollars less. But if we do collect it, then the state just gives us less, so they still only take us to that whole piece of the pie. We don't get any extra. Where it would help is like on the sinking fund, that would help us, and CARES, I think all those bond debt payoff and stuff like that, but it's not just a direct eight million dollars to our general fund. We talked about the audit, and they did do a pre-audit a couple weeks ago. That went very well. They'll be back in September for about two weeks, and we don't expect any surprises this year, but, and that should finish up sometime in October. They might come to the board and let us know how the audit went. We also discussed staffing, kind of where we're at. Do we have, do we have to hire any additional staff due to increased classrooms or any like that, and/or what we might do if some of the staffing positions aren't filled before school starts, because we do still have quite a few out there, so it looks like they've got a handle on that too, on what the process would be. Negotiations, that was on the agenda, but then since then, we've kind of got a closed session, so we'll be discussing that later today in closed session, kind of where, where the things are on negotiation. And then we also talked a little bit about Department of Education funding, because the MASB sent an email out a while back. It talked about the six point one billion dollars that might not be coming from the Department of Education, then shortly after that, I guess now that is being funded, that is being funded. So we're keeping an eye on what all of our grants, Title I, all those, and where we're at with the Department of Education funding, and so far, we seem to be, as a school district, pretty much on par, so. Anything else to add?
I'm sorry, can you clarify that last part? What do you mean, we as a school district in terms of federal funding? How would we be different from others?
So some school districts get different grants for different things, and some of those grants may not be funded completely or might be pared back or something like that. So we're, we're monitoring ours, and as a whole, we're not seeing a lot of change right now.
Thanks very much, Tim. I appreciate that, especially the township money. That was interesting clarification. Appreciate that. I'd like to pass the mic over to Lauren Gold from the Policy Committee.
So we also met this evening. We went through some Neola updates regarding conflict of interest that just talks about the ethics of accepting or not accepting money or gifts from, when it comes to federal grants, and so you'll see that language come up soon. We talked about just some very small changes in the small unmanned aircraft systems, the drone policy. Then we talked about Policy eighty-three thirty student records and how we can make our policy more in line with what goes out to families regarding FERPA. We talked about updating the videotaping policy into the 21st century to reflect that we don't really tape things in the, that way anymore. We talked about having some continuity built into the DEI Policy Committee on the administrative level, and we decided on our next couple of meetings in September.
Fantastic. This is, that's a good summary, and more details to follow for sure on all of that. The next thing is, is a discussion I wanted to initiate. We're, I was looking ahead. It was prompted, actually, by a board member who said that they were not able to attend December, when we usually have our meeting, and so I, for evaluating the superintendent, so I worked out a schedule. When I shared it with the superintendent during our weekly meeting, her suggestion was that we could probably do the formal final evaluation as early as December. I was surprised by that, but I thought, well, and she has some insights and ideas, and I don't have a printed copy of the worksheet for you, but I think it's in your board, in your supplemental document that you received, but I would hope to sort of set some scheduling today. I want to kind of burn this into a calendar so we know, and Dr. Kowalski knows when we're going to be doing that. Did you want to talk about that whole expedited or sped up process, Dr. Kowalski, or did you want it to, just wait for it to come up organically?
I sent a follow-up email to the documentation that was shared and just shared some reflections on my past district and some of the work we had done with MASB when we all were required to do that training last year, and how the evaluation cycles and timelines can be served at different times of the year, and how you can adjust those, and that it happens more often than you think. So I'm happy to answer questions about that as they come up, but it'll still be your discussion about the timeline. Thank you.
Good, thank you. So what I'm recommending is the date for our first quarterly review is somewhere in October 2025, and we have two meetings then, the 14th, and we have one on the 30th. I'm just asking if any one of you has a preference, or if you have a preference. In the, for the last eight years that I've been on the board, superintendents have just gone down the list of all of the categories and let us know what they were working on, and it's just a great opportunity to clarify some of those elements. Jennifer Stebbin.
I just wanted to back up for a minute. I'm the person who asked about the, the meeting in December. I have a required work trip that will disallow me from being here, and so I had asked Michael because I knew that that was about the timing. We have done the annual review in November and in December before. We wanted to include Candace before she left the board one year, and we pulled it up because it kind of wasn't fair to have a new trustee evaluate a superintendent that hadn't worked with them. So that's kind of where this is coming from, and I wanted to give a little bit of history also on, on the superintendent evaluation. So when Steve became our superintendent full-time, Scott had a different schedule, so he had an annual review, kind of like what we do towards the end of the year. The timing was a little bit different. You probably, Michael and Tim, probably remember this, and, and Steve brought up the idea of continuous improvement in conversation, which I also liked very much, and so we had proposed that we would have a quarterly review with the one being what the Department of Education and the state needs, so kind of keeping that same timing, but having a closed session on a quarterly basis and a little bit more informally, just because if we were keeping things that long, we should be talking about them, both positive and areas for improvement, right? So that's just a little bit of the history behind, behind this, and I like the idea of, of kind of looking at dates and going out. My first question was, this is going through December 2026. I can't commit to a calendar through December 2026 for work. Is there the possibility of maybe just looking at this calendar academic year that's a little bit easier to manage? I mean, I don't think all of us have our schedules through June either of 2026, but that would be a little easier to manage.
At a certain point, I think it's November, we try to knock out or clarify the schedule for the upcoming year. I'm not sure when we usually do that, but what I did want to make sure we did, I'm less concerned about the actual dates, but I did want to draw attention to a couple of things. When the actual cycle is, when the mid-year progress report is, and when the final is, and it sounds like we can do that without being too committed to the date. Also, just a reminder, I'm not saying this directly to you, Jennifer Stebbin, but the work can be done with a quorum. It's, it's preferable that we're all at the table, obviously, because we, we do conversations, so I'm sure we'll modify and adjust the schedule as need be, but we can talk about October at this point. So if we could just sort of pick one of the two dates in October at this point, that would be great, the 14th or the 26th. Does the board have a preference?
I prefer the 14th. I won't be here on the 28th.
Because of what, on the 20th? Oh, Colorado. Okay, good. So we have one board member not here anyway, so the 14th. Does the 14th work for the rest of y'all? I'm getting nods across the table. Look at that. I have the sad news is that the student representative isn't usually a part of the superintendent's evaluation. Often, we go into closed session for that, and although I, I appreciate your pluck, so we'll aim for the 14th of October then. Thank you. For the next one, the formal final evaluation, that's probably the better word, where the superintendent will provide a portfolio of evidence to the board. We're looking at December 2025. I just want to call it up on my own calendar. We had two meeting dates, the ninth, only on one meeting date, the ninth, and I understand that that's the, the month that you are not able to attend, correct, Jennifer? So the question then is, if we have it on the second, December 2nd, or we don't want to have a meeting, well, we could possibly do it on the 16th, but that's pretty, it gets close to the holidays, but it's not unheard of. So let me hear from the rest of the board about dates then.
Would that be an additional meeting, or we would be moving?
It would be the, in a closed session at the end of a regularly scheduled meeting, at this point. That's what I'm looking at.
So we would move from the 9th to the 16th?
Oh, if, if, oh, sorry, the 16th is not a regularly scheduled meeting. That's correct. Sorry, my bad. The second, though, is. So we call a special meeting, just?
The 9th is the only regular.
The 9th is the only meeting we have.
The 9th?
I can pull the schedule.
We can wait.
Yeah, but that, that's, that's what I've got on my calendar, is the 9th.
That's correct. Sorry, my, I, I didn't quite hear you. So what we're saying is we cannot do it on the 9th. Jennifer cannot be with us. I'm resting, asking if the rest of the board can be with us, on the 2nd or the 16th. Second is a regularly scheduled meeting. The 16th would have to be a special meeting.
The second is not a regularly scheduled.
Oh, it's not? I'm sorry.
There's just one in December.
The only meeting, I think.
I've got it now, sorry. That's correct. That is a hundred percent correct. I wasn't, I didn't think I'd be actually able to attend any of those meetings, but we'll have to see.
We, we could, so I, I'm just, the idea on the table is moving the meeting on the 9th to either the 2nd or the 16th, potentially, not having two meetings. Is, is that what you're saying, Michael?
Yes. So just having a special meeting for the purpose of going into closed. Yes. So, just having a special meeting for the purpose of going into closed session for superintendent evaluation on the second or the sixteenth.
So, we're, we're going to have two meetings in December. We're going to have our regularly scheduled meeting on the ninth. And then we will have an additional special meeting.
Just for the evaluation.
Close session.
Are there any of the ninth or the sixteenth that anyone is not able to participate in?
A quick question. Generally, do you remember what the workload is at a regular board meeting in December? I think I recall we will have a student presentation or two. So, I'm just wondering if.
We've, we've wrapped up around ten or so. The workload is on my shoulders or the board president's shoulders to write up summaries and reviews and get feedback from everyone off, offline.
I'm sorry. I was just thinking about timing for the meeting on the ninth. Is my, if we could just simply move into a closed session, realizing Jennifer can't be here. Sort of makes it our lives easier. But if it's going to be a, a long general meeting, then I'm not opposed to a special.
The first time we did this took about two, two or so hours. Then we sort of got into the swing of things. So, it's, it's about one and a half to two hours.
If I, if I could, I think what Darcy's asking is what's the agenda look like for the regular meeting on the ninth?
Well, I'm, I can prognosticate and we can limit the number of reports we have then to make it shorter. But a, 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 as we move to a special meeting on December second or sixteenth, it will be considerably shorter meeting.
Michael, if I may, ask us to consider just having the one meeting in December still, but moving it potentially to the second or the sixteenth. It's a little late, but.
The whole purpose of moving it away from the sixteenth and only having, yeah, was to try to avoid putting too much pressure on folks. That would be the last possible day anyway. So, I'm hearing a general lean toward maybe having an entirely moving everything up in the calendar to December second, which would fit Jennifer's schedule. And now, let me ask the rest of the board. Does that work for you? Because that is a change from what we've had in the past.
I mean, I could do the second.
December second?
I'd prefer the second over the sixteenth.
I would prefer the sixteenth. If we're gonna, I mean, I would prefer the ninth, but if we're gonna change it to the sixteenth, Tuesday's coming right after Thanksgiving. The second is coming right after Thanksgiving.
It is right after Thanksgiving. We didn't actually, I didn't also discuss whether we could do it in, in January either, which is another option.
I just wanted to add that I think we are supposed to be reviewing board operating procedures in December. I know that was something that.
Which we didn't do in the past.
Yeah.
Usually, it's a pro forma thing, but we can also do that in November. We have a lot of work ahead. If we're gonna tackle that board operating procedures, that's gonna be a heavy lift in the.
So, I might be the minority here, but I would personally rather have a special meeting and not make the December meeting super long, but I realize that I am potentially in the minority.
No, I'm, I'm wide open to a special meeting.
I could do either, whatever dates and come twice. I don't, I'm fine in December.
I, I could do that as well. I could come on the second.
You could come on the second? Or the night?
I could, I could do both.
Well, right now, the ninth is scheduled and one person won't be here, and that's fine, but we'll, so can we? What am I hearing from you? December second for the rest of the board? Except for Darcy, who would rather have it on the sixteenth. I might not even be able to make it on the second either, but that's fine then. In that case, you would run the show that evening.
Can, can I just, can I just offer one thing because you talked a little bit about quorum? So, I just wanted to come back to that. I, I wouldn't normally ask a meeting to be moved because of, of travel schedule for work. I would like us to consider moving it because the number one job of the entire Board of Education is the hiring, evaluation and firing of the superintendent. Like, that's, I think, the most important thing. And having a new superintendent, I would love, no matter what date it was, to have the full team. That would be a preference.
If, if I could chime in, I think, because Darcy had brought up that the second would be immediately following Thanksgiving. However, if we push anything to the sixteenth, we're, we're going a, a large span of time without a meeting. I would, I would go with what Lauren said and have a special meeting on the second and keep our regularly scheduled board meeting. So, there's no deviation to the already posted schedule. And then we can just do a special meeting for the evaluation on the second. If Darcy is agreeable to that.
As we pointed out, I might not be able to make it either. So, my intent would be to submit the documents to the team to review. And just as we've done in the past, we read everybody's comments and we look and assess everybody's scores. That job of coordinating all that would be up to whoever's running.
But that defeats the purpose then of, of not having all of us here. So, then why don't we just, in which case, I'm not, I'm not wanting to change it from what's published. Why don't we just do the regular meeting on the ninth and then the special meeting on the sixteenth? Does that work?
For me? Well, for a special meeting for the superintendent evaluation on the sixteenth. And that's actually not so bad because we wouldn't need this staff in attendance as they, they've done in the past. How does the sixteenth work for everybody for a special meeting? Nods, nods, nods and shrug and nods. Okay, thank you. All right. It sounds like we're moving that one to the sixteenth, special meeting for the sixteenth. Appreciate that. And it's not too fast after December. The next is when the new cycle would begin formally with two, with the quarterlies. The first is an informal one set up for April and there's two dates for that. Either of which I think we can be pretty flexible about. I just want to double check that I've got the right calendar up. So, we have the seventh or the twenty-eighth in April. Do you have preference? Dr. Kowalski? Board, what? Oh, I'm, no, because the, I think April first. Oh, you're right. I, I thought April first was a Tuesday. So, it's the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth. Thank you.
Just, just one thing. I, I don't have all of, like, I don't have the academic calendar in front of me and I don't have our list of all religious holidays to include all celebrations that might be occurring. And I know we did need to move one this year, which was great in, in September, that we, we could move that. I'd like to just double check to make sure we don't pick another date because we don't have a published and approved calendar for the Board of Education for twenty-twenty-six.
Sorry for interrupting. Go ahead.
I just, I want to make sure we're not saying it's going to be on a particular day when we don't have a published calendar. We haven't had the opportunity to kind of make sure there's not a celebration on that day.
When we start working on our calendar for the next year. So, I just want to draw the attention then to the board that we will have a quarterly, probably around April, a mid-year required required review by the new law in June or July. And another informal one this time in October. And finally, the last one in December. And I think our, our, hearing from the rest of the board about how flexible we could be about the December meeting. This is fine. I'd rather not do it in January because then there'll be, there might, there'll be probably new board members, will be new board members. No, I'm talking about twenty-twenty-six. There'll be, there'll be new board members starting in twenty-twenty-seven. So, I'd rather get those people who are rolling off to get their final comments and their final digs and support at the same time. Okay, so, we can leave it at that unscheduled until we, we have the entire calendar. But when we review the calendar for the next year of meetings, I want us all to be cognizant of the fact that we have to, to do these evaluations. So, thank you very much. So, we have dates for this year at least and we'll look the rest up. So, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Scheduling work. And thanks for the audience for participating, participating so well. Administration board updates. We'll usually start with superintendent and then we work our way along the table. Did I miss something? No, good.
Thank you so much. That also aligns with much of the work that's been taking place with my transition, entry and transition, transition plan. Promising to give you an update on some of that in September. So, I'll hold that until the October meeting and those will go nicely together. So, speaking of that, one of the most rewarding parts of the summer in the transition has been my connecting with the community. Attended Salty Summer Sounds on July thirty-first. We had previously set that up with our partners over at City of Celine. And then, of course, they had the girls softball team join also and be honored that night, which was just really special. Jackie Martin and I have been educating folks about Parent Square at each of these opportunities. And so, really a joy to celebrate them. And it was a salty night, as I remember. It was very salty and sweaty, like, like Saturday was. At Summer Fest, which was another great opportunity to engage with the community, meet lots of families and students. I think Paul Heineck asked me how many had come by our booth. I said two hundred. I think a couple of people thought I was overestimating that, but it was nice to meet a lot of folks. And just special shout-out to Brooke and Dante from the foundation. They were also, had a booth down there helping out. So, those are the student reps this year. And then there was Ms. Celine. I am new to the community. I didn't know quite what to expect and I was so impressed with that and the event and all of the work that went into it. Congratulations to Madeline Marshall, who won. Sophie Zabinski's, I probably butchered that. I'll, I'll get it right. First runner-up. And of course, our own board student representative, Gillian Hayes, who's with us tonight, who earned second runner-up. Today, just earlier today, I was over at Zoller and we did work as IS, with the ISD and all of the local superintendents preparing and doing some deep, deep work and thinking on our upcoming CTE village. This is such an incredible opportunity for our region, for our communities, for our students. A truly transformative investment because we need a skilled workforce. And this is not the voc ed that you might conjure up in your, in your brains, that even I do from, from years and decades past. Truly, this is career technical education, experiential learning. And I can't wait to further get out in the community and talk about that. As you may have heard, we reached a tentative agreement with S E A and more information will follow on that. I just wanted to share that my own hope is that this will help set the tone for the school year and we'll move forward positively for our students and serve them together. Lastly, a lot, a lot of preparations to bring our students back in a couple of weeks. We're so excited to do that. Monday, we had just an amazing new staff welcome that Carol Diglio put on, really interactive, kind of inspirational. Every time I saw them, they were working together and many of them new to teaching, many of them new to our district. We've had administered C-STACK training, safety training, making sure that we're all ready to go to keep our students safe psychologically and physically. We've had some great special education training provided by our wonderful Julian Monica. And so, they've done some great work. And then, of course, Rex's annual, bringing his staff back on Friday. I'm looking forward to that as well. So, lots of work that have gone in with our principals. We've done a leadership summit last week. It was all hands on deck to collaborate and vision and just get ready for the students, which is really, you know, the heartbeat of what we're doing. So, we're anxious to welcome them back. And lastly, we'll be sending out another community message with, with some of those details this week. Those will be bi-weekly starting this week. So, thank you so much for the opportunity and.
We always like to have our students go first when we talk. If you have anything to say, Gillian, no pressure, but we'd love to hear from you if you have anything to add for quick updates from what you've been doing around the community.
Yeah, so I've been at Ms. Celine for a little bit. So, things have been a little bit on hold and cross-country camp. I was like, ooh, okay. Currently, work in progress on, I'm gonna send out an email, hopefully by next week, to the principals and just saying, hey, if there's any clubs that have done anything pretty impressive over the summer, let me know. Because I'm only at the high school, so I know about them. So, I'm gonna send out that and then I'm just gonna ask them to keep me updated on anything that happens. And yeah, we're ready to get started. I'm gonna be after Madeline and seeing when she's available.
Nate.
Are you really gonna turn this microphone over to me? I'll keep it short, Jen.
Remember to cut him after thirty seconds, okay, Ben? Okay, thank you. Just teasing.
So, I have to just acknowledge and say thank you to all the board members for all the time you spent with me the very first week that I got selected to be on the board. I got to meet with everybody. I found out there's two places to meet in this town. And so, then I get a sense of who, who likes to go where. But I wanted to just throw a couple of comments out of everybody that I met. Tim, a lot of people don't know this, but one of the takeaways from our meeting was that his company donates the landscaping of the medians on the freeway down right through town. And it's just, it's really cool. And I actually got a Facebook post, probably heard us talking about it with a picture of it. And they had just done that. And I thought that was really cool, that you should, people should know about that. Darcy, we had a great meeting as well with some unanticipated additions to our meeting, which were entertaining. My daughter was at Michigan State the very next day. So, she did go to the dairy store. And they didn't make the surplus store yet, but anyway, and Dr. Kowalski, I had some other comments, but I see that Diet Mountain Dew sitting in front of your computer. I gave that up about three and a half months ago and I'm just kind of consumed with looking at that can right now. I'm gonna try to just not look at that much more. I was an addict. Michael, we had a really good meeting before the selection process started. So, I'm gonna just move on, keep this quick. Jen, we've talked on the phone several times. We're yet to get together, but we have some connective tissue already. So, we have a little familiarity. Dr. Gold, our, my takeaway there was your horus background. Found that really interesting. And my daughter wants to be a pediatrician only because the doctors aren't the ones that have to give the shots. And I've got a great nickname for Jason. My takeaway from your meeting was, how do you say your last name? And I'm not kidding you, we refer to you as my country in our house now. My country tis of thee is how you say his last name. Tis at ease.
Maybe, maybe Dr. McVay can take that lesson for, for my last name.
I also had a great meeting with Brad, who was, is taking his place. And I feel it was important for me to kind of honor his legacy. He's the one that got elected for this position. So, I had some really good input from him. He actually reached out to me today, wished, congratulated me again for being at the meeting tonight. I also reached out to Kelly Van Single. She was gracious enough to meet with me. We have a couple of her friends. We had a really good meeting and found some common ground with what, what they're looking for from the board. So, I appreciate their time with that. And then, obviously, I met a lot of the administration this past week and looking forward to visiting the schools with the principals. And I'll be reaching out to all of you. I'd love to see the school and have you showcase what's really exciting about this year. I've seen the high school and the middle school, but I'm looking forward to seeing the other, other schools as well. So, super excited to be part of the boards. Thanks for welcoming me.
So, just briefly, I want to thank all of our staff. So, much work goes on here in the summertime. I mean, you just drive down the road and you see all the construction going on. Very anxious to see the traffic flow at the middle school this year. And then, all the hiring, new hiring, tons of work from Carol and her team with that. All the negotiations and the days spent doing that. So, just at the building level, all the stuff going on with our principals and everything else at the building levels, so much work goes on in the summer when you think everything is kind of quiet. It's really not. Thanks.
Thank you. I will third the Ms. Celine Scholarship Pageant that happened on Saturday. I've been a part of it for a few years now. And it continues to be a lovely community event. We did have twelve young women from Celine who participated. And every participant was amazing. I would also like to note that the Celine STEM Boosters are having an event next Friday. It's gonna be here in Liberty School. It's just kind of a, a social meet and greet. The different teams will be there. Some, like, I think the robotics teams might bring their robot. And I think there might be some events or hands-on activities from Science Olympiad, but there'll be snacks, some games. I think we're doing a movie. So, if you just want to come and bring your kiddos to learn more about the different teams in the district, that's a great opportunity. So, next Friday here at six o'clock. And then, I think at the, near the end of September, the STEM Boosters are gonna be partnering with the district and looking at the opening or official grand opening of the STEM Center at the high school, STEAM Center at the high school.
Darcy, what was the, what was the date?
It's Friday, August twenty-second. Thank you. Six P M. It's Friday, August 22nd. Thank you. 6:00 PM.
I just wanted to say that it was great to see so many people chatting with Dr. Kowalski at the Summer Fest tent. I popped by for a short time and it was pretty, there was a lot of traffic. Speaking of traffic, I'm 100% in favor with you, Tim. I'm really looking forward to seeing the traffic flow. I've been watching, I drive past there almost every day. And I've been watching and wondering how it was going to go. And also, it's been great to watch Dr. Kowalski meet so many members of the community informally and formally. I don't know how many lunches you've had to have. We had, we shared one with the mayor at one point. We couldn't get the acting city manager at that time. But we'll have a sit-down with Dan Swallow when he, Swallows or Swallow? I can't remember, when he arrives in early September. So it's been great watching you meet and greet, Jennifer.
Nate, I think that was really cool that you met with other trustees and candidates. So thank you for doing that. Speaking of Brad Gerby, I wish him the best of luck in his new role. I saw on our social media site, Jackie had posted some pictures of new employee orientation. And I always look forward to the, I don't want to call it a hazing because that's against policy, but the fun video. And I saw him sitting at one of the tables. And that was a little surreal, seeing him be onboarded into our school district. I know he's going to be great. I wanted to wholeheartedly thank you and acknowledge the tremendous effort of both collective bargaining teams. And I share Rachel's hope for a very positive start to the school year. So thank you to everybody. I also really appreciated the both of you, Michael and Rachel, starting off this meeting, acknowledging the grief that's in our school district. Thinking of Aminas families, family members and Shannon's. And I look forward to seeing the Pleasant Ridge family tomorrow.
I was going to echo that. I hope that both Dr. Allen and Ms. Sonnen's memory is a blessing. I was, I'm sad to say that I had met Dr. Allen, but hadn't had the privilege to meet Ms. Sonnen. But I did think of her when I bought this water bottle because I read that she, I enjoyed reading about her life and the impact she had. And they said she loved pink and spread kindness. So when I saw it, I thought I would buy it and honor her in this little way from the table today. And my condolences to the families and community. I would like to welcome the incoming young fivers and kindergarteners especially and send virtual hugs out to their families. It's always such a big moment, sending your little five-year-old out into big kids' school from preschool or wherever, from home. So I like to think of them at the beginning of the school year. And welcome back all the students. And thank all of the teachers, staff, administrators, who are doing so much great work to make their school year start out successfully. My only month mention this month is that August is National Immunization Awareness Month. So a reminder, starting in September, to get your vaccines. And a reminder to come back fully immunized. And you know, for our middle schoolers, don't forget those 11-year-old immunizations. So that will hopefully keep our schools as healthy as possible this year.
I will also echo what Jen and Lauren said about our losses. It definitely hits different when you're on the board. I experienced that. I didn't get a chance to really know either of those staff members very well. But we are a giant community and family here. So keep those families in your thoughts and prayers. On a lighter note, I want to give a shout out to a couple of high school students that started their own business and have been hustling and hustled to my front door and got me to buy their service. But that's just a demonstration of the high school kids that we have just kind of going above and beyond, hustling, being entrepreneurs. I love to see that in kids, especially at the high school level, middle school level. A couple of our programs that the teachers really push, I think, really inspire the kids to do that. Also, this STEM meet and greet, thank you, Darcy, for bringing that up. I'd love to try to get there with my kids because I think it's fun to expose them to that. So if it's a meet and greet, definitely try to get out there with your kids if you can. I think that's terrific. The last thing I would like to do, the board at the last meeting when we were electing our new board member, Nate, so welcome aboard, Nate, we had some spirited discussion. And I want to outwardly apologize to one of our candidates, Kelly Van Single, regarding some of the light in which I was describing my preference of Nate over her. And I don't think that I characterized or chose my words very appropriately. And that certainly was not my intent. And a strong lesson that I want to teach my kids is that when you make a mistake, you apologize. So to Kelly, hopefully she's watching. I do apologize. I also apologize to the district and the community because the comments that I made were not best chosen. So I do apologize for that.
Thank you. Jason, thank you, everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
So moved, Stubbin.
Support, Tizidies.
Are you sure you're pronouncing that correctly? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. 7-0, thank you. Items on the next agenda, Dr. Kowalski, what do you got for us for next time we're meeting?
We have a special meeting next week to approve the contract with SEA. And that was posted, I believe, yesterday. And that is the only item on that agenda.
Well, that's right. Okay, thank you. And a member of the public comment, public may speak for up to three minutes. We have one, I understand. And it's Daisy Sharman. Thank you. Beg your pardon?
I said I'd take my glasses off so I can read. I'm old. Hello, my name is Daisy Sharman. I'm a member and co-chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee. I have presented to the board on numerous occasions representing CAC and special education parents. Today, I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and my son, who is in the special education program at the high school. As of last numbers that I was given, Celine has 869 students with IEPs. Total enrollment for the district is 4,669 students. That means that nearly 20% of the students enrolled in Celine are part of the special education program, a fairly significant number. Celine has often been considered the gold standard for special education in the county. It's also been referred to as a destination district for families who have children that qualify for special education because of everything Celine has to offer. Celine has special education programming from early childhood to young adult. In fact, Celine was the first district in Washtenaw County with its own young adult program. So with all of the impressive things that I've just stated about the special education program here in Celine, I was stunned to be watching the Board of Education meeting last month and hear some of the most dismissive and belittling comments about special education come from the table. As a special education parent, watching as one of our own was demeaned and frankly insulted was extremely disheartening. To have special education parents and students be made to feel insignificant and unimportant by members of the Board of Ed is unacceptable and heartbreaking. We as parents of kids with disabilities want what every parent wants, for our kids to feel wanted and supported and included. I can tell you that listening to what was said at the Board of Ed table that night, I felt several things, but that my son has value isn't one of them. Thank you. There are several parents I've spoken with that feel our kids are considered less than by the district, that we as part of the community don't have a voice. And when we try to speak up, we're dismissed. That is not only unacceptable, it's truly an awful feeling. My hope is that you all have actually heard what I've said tonight and will take the time to reflect and consider ways to improve your understanding of the significance of special education in the district. Realize that we add value to the community and we're not just a burden to be shoved in the corner. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sharman. The next Board of Education meeting will be a special meeting held on August 19th at 6:30 PM. As Dr. Kowalski said, there's only one item on the agenda. There may be an HR report as well. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into a closed session of the board at 7:32, with the intent to reopen at 8:00 PM. Thank you. For the purpose of collective bargaining, 8C, under the open meetings act, a simple majority is enough to enter into a closed session. And I should also add, there will be no action taken after the meeting.
So moved.
How about, Darcy?
Second.
Is that Tim? Was that Tim? Oh, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 7-0. And we will usher everybody out of the room and get right to it. No need for a bio break, I believe. Okay, well, slight bio break then. Was it Tim?
Thank you, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular Board of Education meeting of August 12th at 8:21.
Some move.
Was that Tim Austin? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Nate Hanson, second. Thank you very much. All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ha! Thank you very much. Thank you Ben.